Call a meeting to order, OMC regular meeting Wednesday, August the 20th, 2025. I want to announce to the audience, we have some microphones now that we ordered and hope everybody can hear us. Can you hear us real well? Okay. And I want to advise the council, you don't have to speak in right to the, you can just stand back like this and they can still hear you. So, everybody clear on that? And I'll say a prayer for, as our people have traditions and customs, always say a prayer before the meeting. I'll say it this time. Thank you Father, for this beautiful day. Thank you for the season that you granted, Father, for the, you bestowed upon mankind for our use and for our survival, Father. Gracefully bestowed upon us, Father. Thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the mineral estate that we have to defend, Father. We have to protect, Father. Thank you for the council here all being here today, precious all their health, Mr. Shareholders today, all their health, Father, our children, our grandchildren, Father. Give us strength in the days to come, Father, in the future, Father, for the sake of our people, Father, our mineral estate, and our shareholders. In Jesus' name, amen. This is deceased office agents in July 2025. James Vincent, April 3rd, 2025, Palm Harbor, Florida. Bruce Smith, May 10th, 2025, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Sonny Howard Graves, July 10th, 2025.
Alvin Burke in Mexico. Catherine A. Albardo, May 15th, 2025. Los Angeles, California. James Saffington, June 25th, 2025. Ryan, Texas. Melissa Robbins, July 10th, 2025. Jofflin, Missouri. Catherine M. Elrod, February 20th, 2025. Arkansas City, Kent. Sandra M. A. Jameson, July 14th, 2025. Hominy, Oklahoma. John Atkins III, John D. Atkins III, July 14th, 2025. Yates Center, Kansas. Earl E. Chrisos, February 21st, 2025. Rockonero, Oklahoma. Daniel P. O'Brien, May 13th, 2025. Tulsa, Oklahoma. Louis G. Gray, July 24th, 2025. Barjul, Oklahoma. Clarence E. Brothers, July 24th, 2025. Husk, Oklahoma. Judy G. Lester, July 28th, 2025. McAllister, Oklahoma. Connie J. Schroeder, October 13th, 2024. Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Evita L. Jefferson, July 3rd, 2025. Tulsa, Oklahoma. E. Condeville, Oklahoma. May the rest of the people. Roll call.
Councilman Big Horse?
President.
Second Chair Tishawala?
President.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Here.
Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
President.
Councilman Shackelford?
Here.
Councilman Waller?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. I'd like to read into the record the superintendent's report for August 20th, 2025. The report is as follows. For oil and gas water royalties for June 2025 production, total oil produced was 290,793.2 barrels. Royalties paid was $2,927,143.1, or, excuse me, dollars, and then 18 cents. The total gas produced was 131,229 MCFs, and the royalties paid was $48,450.0. The total gas liquids produced was 121,161 gallons, and the royalties paid was $47,837.31. The total tank bottoms produced was 355.47 barrels, and the royalties paid was $7,822.13. The water usage royalty paid was $1,200.0. And the waste disposal royalties collected were $0.0. For rental bonuses collected, oil and gas rentals paid was $2,080.0. Oil gas bonus paid was zero, rental paid was zero. Saltwater easement rental collected was $2,400. The late payment charge was $729.60. For other minerals, APAC produced 28,592.10 tons and paid $38,892.06 in royalties for June. Candy Creek Crusher produced 12,842.13 tons and paid $14,383.19 in royalties for May. Burbank Materials produced 16,331.21 tons and paid $20,250.72 in royalties for May and produced 17,692.47 tons and paid $22,294.11 in royalties for June. Wilson Ranch and Rocky Banks both produced zero and paid zero for royalties for the month of June. And then for Schmidt Brothers, they produced 320 cubic yards and paid $240. And again, that was for June for producing wells or wells capable of production. Total number is 16,464 on record of those. 11,943 are oil, 1,349 are gas, five are gas with easement, 114 are oil and gas combination wells, 492 are TA'd wells, 72 are CO2 injection, 51 are water and gas injection wells, 130 are saltwater disposal wells with easements, 942 are saltwater disposal wells without easements, 1,254 are injection wells, eight wells are listed as injections with easement, 102 water supply wells, and we have two that are water supply wells with easements. For the month, there were 15 approved permits. Of those, two were workover permits, 10 were plugging permits, three were emergency plugging permits, and there were no emergency workover and no drilling permits approved. And there were no new drilling completions reported for the month. And that concludes the superintendent's report for the month.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'd like to also announce that you brought in Alfred McKinley from BIA and Heather Little from the BIA. And I don't know what their titles are, but if you have any questions. Mr. Dos was invited, Nick Dos was invited, but he's on leave. And if you have any questions about leases or anything of that nature through
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question about the total barrels produced for the month. I noticed it's back up again, close to 300,000 barrels for the month. Last time you were here, we were missing about 100,000. Been usually around 30, 300,000 barrels per month, give or take 5,000 barrels or so. And now it's back up. Did you ever determine, or your office determined, what the discrepancy was or why we were down so much the last time, approximately 100,000 barrels?
After the, excuse me, after last meeting, I did go over and investigate that. It doesn't appear to be, late reporting. It appears to have been an isolated incident involving one oil field. And in an open setting, I don't want to go too much into it to respect the operator's interest, but it appears to have been an isolated incident that occurred within one area. And as noted, I think all of their production has been restored and that, that everything that precipitated that event has been remediated.
The barrels were produced, just not reported. When are we going to get, when are those missing barrels going to show back up again in your report?
I'll have to reach out to the operator. It doesn't appear that the, it doesn't appear the production was sustained, but I will, again, follow up with those parties that were affected by that and continue that conversation.
Okay, so, the, the, I appreciate all those answers. The, reporting's one thing, but how about collection of royalties? Did we still receive the royalties of those, that 100,000 barrels that wasn't reported? Or that there's a delay in reporting? Did we still get the royalty from it?
It doesn't appear that it was sold. I haven't investigated whether it was actually produced as well. I believe the field was shut down for the interim, so, again, I'll continue to follow up with them on what exactly transpired. But it doesn't appear it was sold, so there wouldn't be any royalties to recover at this point. When that does go to the market, then we would recover the royalties at that point, certainly, if it was indeed produced again.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Stephanie Robyn, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Robyn.
Okay, we're up back where we should be on the reporting of this. Is that $100,000, where it's going to show back up in the reporting, that we should be a plus $100,000, I mean, 100,000 barrels somewhere? Where's it going to show up? And when will we get the royalty for it? When will it show up in the document?
Absolutely. If it, if it does, if it had been produced and it sold, it would show as increased production on the month in which it would be sold. Again, it's my understanding that, that the operations out there were temporarily put on hold to do some remedial work. So, I don't believe that it was produced. However, if we have an uptick and there's a huge surge, that would be what would account for it. But again, that doesn't appear to be the case.
Does that we see because they didn't get those 139s approved to be able to do the work? And then, did you not get some help in here to help you get the 139s approved?
There was a conversation with the operator in which they had communicated an interest in wanting to get the permits as quickly as possible, as has every operator I've spoke with, and it maintains, continues to be a top priority of mine. In the past month, we have located additional personnel within the region that were able to come to the facility and have been coming in multiple days a week, helping us expedite any of the oil and gas production leases we have pending, and it has made a significant uptick. You won't see it here in the numbers for this, for June. It is a recent addition. However, for the month of July, there was a significant uptick in the number of approvals. Not the final permits that were issued, but the approval letters, which triggers that 30-day appeal period. And those don't necessarily get captured in these reports. It's only when they have final permits issued. So, in the following months, there should be a noticeable increase in the number of permits that have been issued based upon the recent changes in the way we operate.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, are you through, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Robyn? Are you finished? Councilman Redcorn?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the report. I do have some questions, but yeah, I'm listening to how this is going to be resolved. When, I believe when Engineer Holbert was around back in, in time, we walked through the entire process on accounting for oil. Went through how many people were doing validations, what was going on, you know, with your field team, what was going on on accounting side. So, we kind of felt like oil was, accounting was pretty good. The gas side, however, we felt we had some room to grow. And so, at that time, we talked to the superintendent. We started kind of launches, gas, tried to improve our gas accounting. Well, it might be time to do that again, if we go back and see what's going on. I mean, there's been a lot of personnel changes, money gone from budgets and whatnot. We've had a lot of conversations since that time. So, maybe this council chairman ought to revisit having the BI walk the mineral council through that whole process. And it took a while. We had our contractor working with us, and that was, we'll try to dig up some of those old reports, but that might be something I'd like to do, kind of walk through that whole process again and see where we are back in the day and where we are today. I think it was Teddy Pleger that did work with us to help us get to that point. So, just, just a thought there that we might need to go back and have another look again, how the BIA's accounting for, for both our gas and our oil. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Waller.
We have a great opportunity to examine that. Let's get a report on how it come out of this and if we're going to be shut down. But just to know that it's reported, if you could. Just, just get that raw. Just show that that is exactly missing the production.
Councilman Rebar?
Thank you, Chairman. Superintendent, I guess I'm a little confused again. I first thought the 100,000 barrel drop that we saw last month, we thought maybe it was due to reporting, that maybe one of the, one of the big fields or one of the, one of the purchasers or operators didn't get their production reports in a timely manner, possibly. And then you told, then I thought you just told us that it actually got produced, but, well no, I think you just told Councilwoman Irwin that, that maybe it didn't get produced for one reason or another. I know that there was some weather and flooding and electrical outage. I mean, I know operators that had that happen about that same time period. They couldn't even get to their wells to produce them. And so, that would make sense to me if that was the case, but I really don't know which it is. Did, did, was it, just wasn't produced because of some conditions like that? Or was it produced and just not reported? Or is it a combination of the two?
It was my understanding that it wasn't produced. Again, I'm trying to be sensitive of what we're discussing in an open setting. But it was my understanding there was a confluence of variables that caused the operations to have been shut down temporarily.
That makes a lot of sense. And then, on a different subject, you know, I don't remember, I don't think we've ever been officially told by, by the nation or by your office about, about the lease here in this building for your operation. Is, what I think I remember reading in the, in one of the newspapers is that there'd been a lease negotiated for, I think, a five-year period, maybe a three-year hard period with some type of two-year, maybe extension arrangement. So, is this office actually now under, is the Bureau of Indian Affairs actually have a valid lease for three years or five years?
Yes, there was a lease executed earlier this year for a five-year period. I believe it has, as you cited, a three-year hard period and then a two-year potential early termination period. That was negotiated through GSA and through the chief's office. Our local office didn't have any involvement in that, but it's, I've been provided a copy of that signed document, so for the foreseeable future, we're not going anywhere.
Do you and all your personnel here have plans to stay here for that duration of that, at least that three-year period?
That would be our, that would be all indications. Again, anything, any move of where we, our office's function is something that's headed by GSA. GSA is the one who handles all leasing of government spaces. But barring any unforeseen events, I anticipate fulfilling, or being here for the duration of that lease.
Thank you, Chairman.
Councilwoman Robyn.
That we see that you're talking about. I think I know who you're talking about, and that's a very old lease that we have. At some point in time, that probably needs to be renegotiated. And when it is, we probably need to get those daily reports on what they produce because apparently, apparently, I don't like them fooling with the numbers like that. You know, if they want to shut us down, you know, if they're trying to squeeze us into something else. But we need to review that lease that they have and any other terms and conditions in that lease because it's very, very old. Thank you.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question. You said you're here for the duration. Are you saying the one year or all three years? Just to clarify.
It would be my intent to be here as long as they have me. But it would be, it would, it would be stay, we would, we're not planning to move anywhere, change venue, change location. Obviously, there's compacting conversations going in the background, which may facilitate change in where some of our personnel or all of our personnel are located. However, that would be one of those unforeseen occurrences that would, that would necessitate change in where we're located, potentially. And again, that's another matter which I'm not directly involved in.
Councilman Rebar?
Thank you again, Chairman. On another subject, again, we, we have a guest coming tomorrow that I'm sure you're aware of, Mr. Scott Davis, the Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs, I believe is his title, along with some others. One of the things that we've been asked to address with him is the regulations for operation of oil and gas wells here on our mineral estate. So, in preparation of that discussion, in, in addition to the regulations, as we know to be Title 25, Part 226, there are policies that superintendents in the past have implemented. And if I'm not mistaken, Superintendent Robin Phillips, while she was here, actually provided us a written list of those. And you may have also done the same when you first joined us over here. Well, I think since then, there have been some other policies that have been created, maybe in, already implemented, in addition to the ones that we already knew about that are in writing. Can you tell us if there are some? And, and I'm not asking you at this point, right this minute, that, to describe them if there are, but are there some additional new policies that are not, that haven't been provided to us in writing? And if so, would you please provide them? So, we could have some clarity. Because we have some producers that are hearing some things for the first time and, in reaching out to us about where is it in the, in the regulations that we're required to do this or that we are prevented from doing something else. And we, council members, only know what we, what we have. So, if you could address that, thank you.
I've not formally adopted any policies as far as permitting or operations go. There's the, I think a few ones as far as personnel operations go, such as the line of succession in the event that I'm not available or have to appoint in acting. But that's kind of the limit of what I've done as far as policy goes. There's a number of procedures that have been amended, mainly to expedite matters. Those haven't been formalized. Those are not policies that have been implemented, but rather updates to the procedures as far as what we've had. And those don't generally get formalized, aside from our handbooks and our desktop manuals. So, those wouldn't be policies that would be normally distributed outside of the agency.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent.
I'm curious to find out. Trump has implemented all these new additions or new orders or whatever he sees that's going to go on in the oil and gas business. And I'm, July the 10th, we were in here, and you indicated to us that they haven't trickled down yet. At what point will they trickle down to us? And I want to know if we're going to get a category exclusion. I want to know about all these other things, these other tribes are getting. They don't even have to do an EIS, but yet we have one and we're using it for Mr. Dos. You know, that's helping shut our production down. I just need to know.
I believe, as indicated, there will be a guest tomorrow that may be able to shed some light on that. I spoke yesterday with a deputy regional director who had elevated the question up again. We're still waiting in abeyance on that alternate NEPA process, EASA process, and historic preservation process that had been unveiled and appears to have been implemented on federal lands outside of Indian country. I haven't been provided further guidance on that. I can say, I guess, correct the record, there was an inquiry last time about whether and when we would issue an emergency workover. I had stated that during my tenure, we hadn't. This morning, I signed one. There was a well that had been shut down, and EPA had primacy over it. EPA determined that it would constitute an emergency workover, so giving deference to them, we signed an emergency workover. That, and that copy that will be provided to you guys later today. And that is one where things have been expedited under the new administration.
EPA office, where?
Region six.
Anybody else? Councilman Redcorn?
I just caught wind, four drilling permits were turned down recently, very recently. Is that correct?
No, drilling permits have been turned down, no. No, there was two that were signed that aren't captured in this one, that will be, go on the next month's report. But there haven't been, to my knowledge, any that have been returned or rejected. No, no.
Councilman Rebar?
Okay, so we have a, one of the, one of the policies that I was actually making reference to had to do with, or permits that I think Councilman Redcorn may be referring to. We have an operator in, in, in the meeting with us today who, if I'm not mistaken, and I'd like for them to have an opportunity to, to address the superintendent, because it has to do with one of the policies I was asking you about, but not specifically. So, if the chairman will allow, I'd like to see if, if, if our guest could have an opportunity to, to speak.
Yeah, okay, yeah. You can come up to the table here if you want to, yeah. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, so Greg Oliphant with Seaha Corporation, been chairman and CEO for, I don't know, last 25 years, I guess. Fourth generation of this business. But yeah, just recently, we are applying for four drilling permits.
You speaking to the microphone here?
Okay. We're applying for four drilling permits currently, and we just have a couple issues with the understanding of some of the verbal requests that we've received and where in the Code of Federal Regulations that is. So, the timeline is also a question. I brought some of my members, my technical team here, that can answer and address some specific questions. But one of the policies that we've been requested to do in specific is to amend our drilling plan to cement the production casing to surface. And we don't know that that is a, a regulation. And we've asked numerous times, you know, where that regulation comes from, and we have not received a response yet. And I believe we've had numerous attempts to get some clarification on that, but we haven't received a response in a little over 40 days. And, you know, for us as an operator, the clock is ticking on getting our drilling program done.
During this inquiry, they'd ask us, there's a set, set of standards we've applied for the past several years, which required every new well that's drilled to have the, the entire production casing cemented from perforation at the bottom to the, to surface. That's one that, as, from my understanding, our current petroleum engineer is required of all operators to implement that since he's been at the agency. And from talking to some of our other federal partners, that appears to be the prevailing standard on federal lands. During this request for an exemption of that, it was uncovered that an additional incident may have occurred in recent past that is now being investigated, contemporaneous with trying to evaluate whether an exemption is warranted. I've reached out to some federal partners, as I said, and they've basically said that the way we do it is consistent with industry standards on other federal lands. I'm reaching out to private parties, some private petroleum engineers, and see if there's, the operator has made several assertions that it may be adverse to interest, or there may be other reasons not to do so to implement that standard. And if we're doing anything that's contrary to industry standards or to the mineral state, that's something I want to examine extensively before we grant any variance on it. So, it's a matter that's under consideration, as said. It's not something that was being taken lightly. Some of the assertions that were made, were made without any supporting materials. So, on my side, the onus has been to do all the appropriate research to make a decision based on all applicable and available evidence. based on all applicable and available evidence, rather than act on unsupported assertions at this point. And I apologize for not getting back sooner. There've been a number of things in recent weeks that have taken my attention, undivided attention.
Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry I didn't catch your name. I, just curious.
My name is Greg Oliphant.
Greg Oliphant, Mr. Oliphant, just a curious question, is this critical to making this an economic decision versus with this stringent regulation, it turns a, an opportunity into a, a non-opportunity based solely on the economics of the requirement? Is that what I'm understanding is happening?
That's right.
Okay, all right, so.
Yeah, if you want more technical explanation.
Okay, and it, and I guess, I get a feeling, I, I haven't memorized the regs. I mean, Mr. Rebar's always flashing, that's great. But somewhere in our regulations, you know, we're supposed to hinge towards the economic benefit of the shareholder. So, just, just curious, some, some, some things we need to figure out and walk through. But thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Rebar.
Thank you again, Chairman. So, just, just so the superintendent will know, and in the rest of, I, I made some calls yesterday to some producers that operate here and outside of Os, our mineral state. And it's, and what I've learned from the operators, that the other 76 counties, not all of them produce, but the corporation commission that governs the other 76 counties is not required to cement the production long string to surface. And for those listening in that may not be real familiar with what we're talking about, is when a well's drilled, at some point, it's, the decision is made after looking at samples of the cuttings, electric logs, other mud logging equipment, other technology that's out there to, to give them an idea whether or not it has much of a chance to, to be successful well. At that point, that they'll make the decision, do we plug the well as a dry hole? Or is there, or is there a reason for us to run production casing and see if we can't try to make a well out of it? Because just because you make that determination at that time and run pipe in the well, there's no assurance that you're going to make a well. Getting that oil out of the ground and getting it out of the ground successfully and economically, that's a whole nother, you know, gamble. You know, that's, yeah, this is a gamble. And so, the, the question is, for those listening, is that these people have drilled a well, or know they're going to drill a well, but they're anticipating, what if we decide to run casing and it looks good enough for us to do it? And then we actually try to, to, to make a well out of it, but then it turned out it wasn't, it wasn't what we hoped it would be. It's not going to be economical. So, they've got all this pipe in the ground, and there's an opportunity to pull the pipe back out. You'll cement it right there, that zone that they were actually trying to complete in. And if it wasn't successful, and there wasn't anything else up the hole that they felt warranted the expenditure to, to try to complete it, they would want to cut the pipe off there and pull it out and use it in another well somewhere. It saved the cost of that pipe in the cement. And so, what this new policy that superintendent has said, that he's done some, some due diligence, which I appreciate, asking around, and he did make a reference to on federal lands. Well, I was talking to these other operators, they were talking about outside of federal lands. So, I want to make sure that distinction's made. But, so, so we have an operator here in the room who, four generations, that I think Mr. Oliphant mentioned, Seha is the name of the company, C-E-J-A, they, they anticipate, they'd like the, the opportunity to pull that pipe out if it's not successful and use it in another well. And they won't be able to do that if it's cemented all the way to the surface. And why just cement it to the surface is, is to protect the fresh water and other zones. And, but before they, when they first drill the well, they start to drill the well, they'll run surface casing, what we call surface casing, a bigger diameter, and it'll, it'll cover the, the freshwater zones. And in our area, it's typically around 250 to 370, 80 feet, maybe, maybe 400 feet shallow. So, they're, they're running that, and they're cementing that in. Now, they're going in to drill the well down to the total depth, and they may want to try to produce a zone of 3,000. They don't want to cement 3,000 feet of pipe in, the cost of the pipe and the cement cost if they don't need to and if it's going to be a dry hole. And so, that is the issue here. And what I understand, it's not in the Code of Federal Regulations that require them to cement this long string production casing to surface. It's a policy that's just been recently implemented, and I think I heard the superintendent say that whoever he's relying upon has been here, and the whole time that individual's been here, this has been the policy. And I don't know who that is or how long a period that is, but, but it isn't not a common thing to cement the long string to service. And there is one other alternative. There is a tool you can run at a, at any depth, I guess you want to, called a DV tool, and you, it's got a port in it. So, you could actually run your casing with a DV tool, open up the port, and then cement the rest of the long string. But I haven't heard any talk about that. So, if there's in the new policy, I'd like to know, does the new policy permit running casing with a DV tool? So, these are some of the issues that, that we're hearing, and to Councilman Redcorn's point, I just want to tie my, I, I apologize.
I'm sure.
But I'm sorry, and just, and just to wrap up, to his point, having to do with, in a way, this might be further condemnation of our mineral state. If we have some wellbores that, that are capable of production, if I'm not mistaken, this entity, it just so happens to be an entity that has some new discoveries, if I'm not mistaken, and they're anxious to develop their discoveries, and here we are, they got four permits in to start drilling, and like, no, here we go, roadblock. So, not anything personal with our superintendent or his staff, either one, but it's, it's an issue that I'd like to address. And when we meet with Mr. Davis tomorrow, I think it's going to be something we'd like to bring up, the policies versus regulations, and which trumps what, and, and get a little clarity for that. And that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Superintendent, you have a response to that?
Yeah, I mean, on anything, the, the regs were drafted with deference in it, and consistent with that, we also have federal laws we have to implement. One of those is to put in safeguards to mitigate any potential environmental risks. And from my understanding, the petroleum engineer, based on his expertise and experience and past practice, again, outside of, granted, outside of Oklahoma, he's got a long and extensive career that this was the prevailing industry standard that had been implemented elsewhere. And this is the, as I said, since he's been here, from my understanding, this has always been the procedure that's been required from every operator on every drilling operation for many years. It's to safeguard the environment, I think it was captured in the EIS, although I'd have to go back and double check that, is that this is one of those mitigation efforts that was put in place to safeguard the environment and to expedite some of the NEPA review.
Thank you Superintendent.
Councilman Redcorn, then Council, then Councilwoman Irwin.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my question, too. It just seems to go against the grain of what we've been directed to, which prompted our trip to DC, which prompted our efforts to roll back, because, you know, and we still feel the environmental regulations are detrimental to our development. So, and then the regulations, we've been fighting that for years. The information, so the three things, we went to DC, this one hits right on one of them. Somebody in Texas and Oklahoma, if they're not practicing this, I, that's my question. You know, why are we getting a different set of rules? And it's more stringent. And then my experience dealing with this stuff, if it impacts the ROI, early, early on, you're not going to do it. That's my experience in an oil company. Is that what's going on, is what I'm asking? And it, you know, I know there's technology, but at some point, somebody's got to get the numbers together and present it to the management, and they're going to pull the plug on that. A lot of the technology going on, as Mr. Rebar said, yeah, I understand all that, but at some point, somebody's got to hand this up to the IRS at Seha. And my experience has always been the ROI and the payback and that kind, is that hitting that decision on the management level, is my question? Okay. Right. That, that was my guess. We have, we're on the back end of the decline curve reservation wide, in my view. So, the decision should be really concentrating on that backside, which, very low production, very low pressures, this is what we're dealing with. And maybe a federal guy comes in drilling in an Anadarko Basin, and it's a whole different ballgame. So, that's, that's my question, that's my, you know, if at some point, the decisions...
It's not just economic, it's also formation damage. So, one of the ways you can cement to the surface is you have to put a bunch of pressure all the way down the bottom of your hole in order to squeeze it all the way up the annulus of the pipe to the surface. And in the last offset well, the bear number one, we already lost cement in the formation, just trying to get the basics of what we need to do. And so, we had to go back in and do an additional squeeze job. So, it's not an option to put that kind of pressure on the formation.
I appreciate it.
A DV tool requires you to punch a hole in the pipe, which is, you know, creates long-term problems down, down the road. So, I mean, that's, that's an emergency procedure when you get into trouble drilling. That's not something that you want to implement as a standard operation. No.
Councilwoman Irwin, we've got to wrap this up.
I need to know the definition of what you all call federal lands. I know what federal lands is, but I need how you operate and how that definition affects us. Now, as far as that EIS, we need to give that to our attorney, Mr. Fredericks, and let him take that and compare to what's coming down with trimps, trimps, trumps. Why, why he's changing everything, because it is, my understanding, there's a lot of tribes that don't have to do an EIS. There's people everywhere that don't have to do an EIS. We're sitting here, and we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We need to be, have a little bit more common sense like we used to. Thank you.
You got a response, Superintendent?
Yes, I mean, there, again, as I reiterated earlier, there was several assertions that were made earlier that have been taken under consideration, will continue to be explored if there's an assertion that we're not doing something properly or we're doing something counterproductive, but there will be, there will be remediation put into place. And again, if it's not for lack of effort, it's more so that everything else with the permits have progressed and is completion, it's the variance that they've requested from our standard procedure that is being explored. And if it's determined that the procedure needs to be amended, then it will do so, absolutely.
I've been talking to the superintendent about, on, on a weekly basis, and when all that happened with loss, loss of production, he brought in some people from Muskogee, and I think an extra, some more petroleum engineers came in, too, and helped out and caught everything back up. But he had a workshop about a month ago, wasn't it, something like that, about the environmental regulations that we, we have to endure? And, and all the producers were invited at that time. Maybe he, maybe in, it's time for another workshop to, to school everybody what's going on around here, and just like the downhill problems that we're having right now. But a lot of it's economics, and, and as a business side of myself, it's all economics, and the price, our highest posted price is $59 a barrel now. And, and the production did go up. I, I checked with Pan Gester when, when all that happened. And it went up to, it's gone up to 9,300 barrels a day now. And if you calculate it out, it's 93, over 9,300 barrels, and I believe it'll be going up more. But anybody who don't have any more questions, thank you Superintendent for your time. And thank you Heather, and, and thank you Alfred. Next on the agenda is the Bureau of Trust Fund Administration, Troye Garringer and Stephanie Make yourself comfortable, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Troye Garringer. I'm the fiduciary trust officer for the Bureau of Trust Funds Administration here at the Osage Agency. I have with me today Stephanie Davis, she's our trust accounts administrator, excuse me, our administrator. And what I'd like to report on today is our September payment is scheduled to be in IIM accounts on September 2nd. The payment amount per headright was $3,625. We are encouraging at this time the use of debit cards or ACH payments. We're trying to reduce the use of paper checks. So, when beneficiaries do call in to update their accounts and they're receiving paper checks, we're encouraging them to utilize some form of electronic payments. That's in support of the executive order that the US Treasury was tasked with to reduce the use of paper checks. Our office, again, is located in this building. We're open from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. Our telephone number is 918-287-5791, and we encourage beneficiaries to contact us. We will update their addresses, their contact information, which, again, is also shared with BIA. So, our systems do interface with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. The trust beneficiary call center is available. Their hours are 10:00 AM to 5:30 PM Central Standard Time. Their number is 1-888-678-6836. But I do encourage beneficiaries to contact our office directly at this time. They, one of our staff is currently assisting the trust beneficiary call center and answering phone calls. So, they have seen an uptick in calls, so they're going out to the field right now to assist. So, if beneficiaries would call us directly, we highly encourage that. Is there any questions for us today?
Any questions in the council? Here you go. Thank you, thank you Troyes.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Okay, we've got a shareholder that wants to answer, Congresswoman, go ahead.
I've always been interested in, you said there's a debit card, I don't understand or know about that. Can you give us? Can you give us a, a brief, just how that works? Because I don't have one, and I don't know how that works.
Yes, we contract with a third party to provide a debit card service. Right now, it's with New York Community Bank. They're also called Flagstar, I believe, is their other name. We contract with them, so we can sign you up, and they will mail you a debit card under that bank. There are some fees associated with that, kind of like a paper, I don't know if it's a pay-per-use, but it's similar. There are some of those fees, though, that the government does cover as part of the contract that we have with them. So, it's not like an individual, you know, having that card that you buy outside, you pay all the fees. The government does pay some of those fees for you, so. But yes, that's something that we can sign you up for, and they just mail it directly to you. The only thing is that if you lose it or something, you have to work in connection with the debit card provider. We can't resolve any issues with that. We always have to refer you to them, so it's a little bit out of our control. You're welcome.
Councilwoman Irwin.
What was the name of the bank, please? I didn't mention.
It's New York Community Bank, but they're also called Flagstar.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And I just want to state that Stephanie is our trust accounts administrator, and she is tasked with that responsibility. So, if you need a debit card, reach out to Stephanie, and she can get that going for you. So, that's one of her duties. And, and she handles that region-wide, so that's a large responsibility for her.
Thank you. She does a good job.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Or the audience? Okay, ladies, thank you very much. Good information. Have a good day. Next on the agenda is the Treasury report. Mr. Batson's not going to be able to be here today. I called him yesterday evening and he said that he's sending, Erin Lockridge, she works for the Treasury, and she's got a pretty good position over there. Have a seat, Erin, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, Councilman Red Eagle, Second Chair Chisholm, Councilwoman. My name is Erin Lockridge, I am the Assistant Controller here at the Osage Nation, and I am here to review your financial statements as they were provided for you from the Treasury Office via email. Would you like me to review the current account balances? So in the C395 account, there is a current asset balance of $600,953.45, with liabilities totaling $43,123.97, leaving a fund equity of $557,829.48. And then in your S510 account, there is a total asset of $1,527,497.25, with no current liabilities.
Any questions from the council? Any question from the council? Eric Dunn, I guess, thank you Erin for being here.
Thank you all so much.
Councilman Revar, you got a question? Okay, thank you Erin.
Thank you very much.
Give our regards to Mr. Batson. Y'all want to take a break? Okay, 10-minute break, and we'll come back with.